Yes, he mentioned at the last meeting that he was gonna be out of town for this meeting. So, um, why don't we get started? Does everybody have their computer blew it up or have their copies or whatever is there?
Good.
That he used, okay. Um, if it's okay with council, uh, I'd like to turn it over to Courtney. She was on the committee. Chief's here from our committee. David's here from our committee. Let him tell us what they've done for the last, I think, was it five meetings that I read?
I think so.
Maybe you can take us through sort of a, an overview of that and then lead into what's in the back. Does that sound good everybody or?
Yeah.
I'll do first.
Okay.
Yeah, was Jason coming or no? She was Jason coming?
I thought he was, I heard.
Maybe he's just delayed. So Jason Helber was the fourth member of the committee, um, as the kind of regular firefighter.
He volunteered as the chief chair?
I'm not sure exactly. It just started showing up.
He volunteered or you appointed him or how did we get?
I asked him if he was interested in being on my committee and he indicated he was.
Good, okay.
He has building experience. He does that on the side, so he has, he had good comments. Construction type things.
A good idea.
Yeah, so we met first as kind of a kickoff, kind of where we were at and then David worked on different designs. And then we went through those, really the next four meetings and that excluded the inside and outside. Um, but the outside, you know, we went with more of a traditional Dexter looking building. Um, that was something council hadn't really discussed, so we just did kind of what we thought. That's why we do it today. So David, I don't know if you wanna go through?
Yes, well, good evening everybody. It's great to be back here.
Thanks for coming back.
Oh, very welcome. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll like to pass out basically what you have, it has one extra document in it.
Okay, great.
I wasn't sure if we were gonna do a PowerPoint or a paper, so I was prepared for both and we'll do the paper, very welcome. No moving ahead, I'll probably need to pay.
We'll cut my sandwich.
Any priorities, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I hope.
Okay.
I'm gonna get finished on.
Yeah, well, Paul not being able to help. Uh, can I have that?
Yeah.
Or you can send me maybe the hard copy. I can kind of, or I'll put it all box.
Okay, I'll just pick up where Courtney left off with a little bit of more elaboration. So the five meetings were user group meetings and the focus really started off with our program confirmation. We had a really good start. Obviously, we've been working on it for quite a while. And we used the plan as a way to go through the program confirmation and you'll see if you did a comparison, there are some variations. And I'll cover the major ones as we look at the plan. Um, after that, we did, um, the work sessions, which were basically Sherret's own design using the start point of where we were before. I think we produced three different variations of that before we started really getting into a refinement of a plan. In the course of that, we also did an inspirational exploration of character of Dexter and other fire stations around the country in terms of stylistic things, which really included the basic elements of the fire station. And as court said, we kind of landed on more of the traditional, which really represents kind of what we're trying to do with the main street theme of, uh, city Dexter. And then we started working on the imaging based on that character selection with your different, um, ideas imaging wise. And you see some of your package. I mean, we did have many other ideas, but those were the different variants that we looked at. And then we did budgeting. I'll cover a couple of things that influenced some of the imaging and then also then translated backwards into planning. As I talked about when we were in the work sessions, we were, we were working on a pace that was maybe just a little bit of normal. It was fast, it was fast paced. So we were doing planning and imaging and modeling and volume, volume studies all at the same time. And again, we kind of married it back together where they were different. And some of that, uh, is my point bringing up again was the influence of the zoning ordinance, how it played into the material selection and the proportions and, uh, the use of it all the way around, really not just on the, on the facade, main street facade. And then budgeting, I mentioned, we did that a little bit too. So with that, just being kind of an introduction, the, um, the, um, planning stemmed from site plan, based on the stability on the site, which, uh, we already had Jux on, so when you look at the first site plan arrangement, it's very similar to what it was before. It did shift slightly. Um, we were trying to balance the apron entry into the station, uh, from the rear as well as the exit apron onto the main street, um, in, in a balanced kind of a way, but also to provide good circulation throughout the site where there might be predominantly parking, not just apparatus flow area. And you can see that we showed some geometrics of the apparatus off of Meadowview Drive into the station or off of Eaton Court. And we, for a comparison, we showed an automobile from the, um, the training parking area off to the left, how it could make the maneuvers. So it's really saying it's only big enough for an automobile, not for apparatus. So generally, apparatus come off those two, Meadowview or Eaton Court and primarily that parking lot is just pedestrian vehicles or payload haul vehicles. Access into the site for the public remained as it was before to the shared access easement. And it would be, you know, kind of indicated to be the front, not necessarily blocked, but a reference of, hey, you really shouldn't go past there, here with the green grass pavers separating staff parking from public parking. And that concept basically was the same as it was when we looked at it before and that's when we had the sheriff there too. A couple of improvements to the site, I think, um, where we added some command vehicle parking right off of the office area, right off of the bay. So they're quicker to their vehicles and it's within the apparatus apron area. Again, we're trying to separate different vehicles and different circulation areas, so that was, I think, a bonus in the process. Couple of things we were able to really go down a little deeper on in the site study as compared to before. Um, when we were just looking at maybe just some area, we'll do this kind of step down to the site with some grading. Um, there's pretty good slope grade from, uh, the Ann Arbor Street all the way back to Eaton. Yeah, I'm guessing it's about seven feet, something like that. And I use, I say seven feet as a guess because I use what information we had topographically. And then just from going out there and kind of doing my eyeball test, I, I, I guessed it to be around seventeen. Maybe it's five, maybe it's ten. Um, and the reason I did that, um, not just so I can say that, but we were wanting to place the building on a pad. So it was relatively a level area to Dexter and Arbor Road. We didn't want to necessarily have a slope out or, or slope down or up coming out of the station. We can avoid a slope altogether, but if we could minimize it on the front, I think, uh, the station would be best served if we could do that. And that's the reason we looked at some grading. The other thing we looked at was some, some limited information for some geotechnical investigation that was done in nineteen ninety-seven, again, two thousand and five. So we have some idea based on this site, more so the neighboring site, what kind of soils we're dealing with. So that did impact when we're looking at cost, some of the preliminary foundation ideas that we're gonna have to support the building. All in all, I think the site stayed the same with the location, those sides of the dimension. Uh, now the next is the floor plan. Uh, most of our attention, uh, of our efforts were focused on this, uh, with one, the programming, uh, right sizing spaces, including spaces, maybe even eliminating spaces that we previously had in the concept phase. And going through and refining this with function being the lead. So everything we did was based on the functionality of it. And the input that we got from the department chief and Jason, uh, really were instrumental in kind of fine tuning this and making it really, I think, an optimal functioning plan. The bigger differences are, uh, square footage wise, are the apparatus bay and the support spaces for the apparatus. The living, office, training portion of the building off to the right, uh, basically stayed the same in size, square footage wise. Uh, apparatus bay in terms of arrangement of the apparatus within the bay, uh, became more flexible and also provided a functioning training opportunity for evolutions on the bay floor, uh, by making it deeper. So it was, I think, seventy-two feet and it's a tad bit over eighty-two feet now, uh, from front to back, so it got bigger. Uh, the support spaces off to the left, primarily the decon service support spaces, uh, grew accordingly. And some of that drove some of the, uh, the growth there. Uh, with the ability to talk one-on-one with the chief and the Jason and really work through how each of those functioning spaces can work for them the way they do business, kind of put square footage in each of those spaces accordingly. So that area grew a little bit too. And, um, there's a mezzanine. You can see there's a diagonal black line, very light change. You can see the hatches over that area, the whole interior. Similarly, on the other side of the bay, you can see that same kind of symbol, that single line hatching, diagonal four trenturies. That represents a second story mezzanine. And the two are different. The one to the left, over the pink is primarily a training function. So we have different evolutions of trainings occurring over there and a little bit more. The one on the right, uh, is more of a storage space slash infrastructure space. It's accessible from the bay as well as the, the training mezzanine. I'm gonna go back to that left side now. So you can see on the bottom left-hand corner is a stair and, uh, that's access to the mezzanine. It could be done several different ways. I'm gonna just go back to the other side as a comparison. You can see there's a little stair, just a single run, very narrow, straight up into the mezzanine. It's purely just a communicating stair. Get up there and do what you need to do on the other side now. I'm calling that a communicating stair to the mezzanine for training. Um, and part of that, I'm gonna go back forward to one of our work, last work sessions, when we're looking at the character and the ordinance influence over the building design. Uh, this is in two districts, uh, professional business district and that's a minor part of it. And primarily it's in the Dexter and Arbor Road overlay district, which has a lot of different criteria for design, the night elements. A couple of them on this name is height to width ratio, so there's two to one to help establish a pedestrian feel to it. Is, I'll, it's summary actually, before to it than that. And then there's material choices. Now, on the corner lot, which happens to be, it requires that corner elements, facades, create a distinct architectural character, uh, something of significance. And then talks about volume, creation of volume, and also talks about residential districts applying that, um, overlay that we would treat the building on all sides with that same level of quality, character, material choice. So when you look all the way around the building, there's some effects that are happening. And zeroing in on what it started us with is that stair. So that stair, not only did it just get from the first floor to the mezzanine, we use that kind of as a value approach. Since we already have to do it, let's use that as an iconic part of the architecture, make it a tower. So it, uh, complies now with the ordinance requirement to be distinctive, but it also functionally gets you to the second floor. And since we call that the training side, um, we use that as a way to call it a training tower. So there's gonna be some elements of that, the width of it. And we'll go back to the, if you just visually compare the stair sizes and the gap in between the two stair runs in the pink side. That's set up not just to get up and down, but it's also the distinctive architectural, but it's also a training element. See that's gurney size. You can do gurney lifting through a stair for evacuation and safety and so forth. So there's multi reasons for that being a little bit different, which, uh, drove the size there a little bit. Other aspects to train, I'll recover a couple more. If we flip to the next page and I'll come back to this floor plan. The next one's the mezzanine plan. Again, the pink represents that mezzanine training side. You can see we have the confined training hole in the middle, so you can drop down through there into the work area below. The work area below is open area and that way by design. So we could have this confined training tube to drop you down. And all along that line that separates the mezzanine from the bay are different openings and apertures for training, uh, scenarios to get indoor training during the winter through openings with ladder throws and that sort of thing. And also removable rails, uh, to simulate other things like balconies in an apartment or something like that. So it, there's a lot of flexibility and thought that went into that. It's not defined really well yet, but the concepts that we implemented in the next phase of development are certainly laid out in this. So that kind of goes with the, we're going back to the previous plan, the floor plan, the main, main floor. Couple of things I'll also cover. Uh, in the bay, the main bay, the tan color center there, we're showing the apparatus. And, uh, an introduction of something to value engineering approach, uh, there's two columns shown. Kind of in the middle, um, one quarter inch from each side roughly in between the bays. You can see a circle on one side and it's a circle on top of the wall on the left side. Um, the point of that was two things. One, to introduce another scenario for training. So we could have a, uh, stamp height riser there so they could do indoor training in, in the apparatus bay. And also infrastructure wise, they could have a waterline drop for truck bills and electrical, a gold bit of things for cleaning and so forth. But as a byproduct, or maybe even as a primary reason, introducing that gives us the ability to run a beam across the long side of that bay, which splits the span for the roof structure in half, which reduces the structural cost of doing that roof assembly, whether it be a low slope, um, joist or a pitched roof truss. Either way, it saves money and it gives an opportunity for a different kind of training inside the building, which we thought was a pretty good thing to at least be considering. Um, moving down to the front of the sheet across the apparatus bay on the bottom side. You can see there's some undulation in the bays, uh, outside wall. You can see little dots in walls and there's one or two that look like Z's. That's just an offset in the wall. And that references back to the character of the building, also to the ordinance where I mentioned the ratio of two to one, where we have to show distinct, kind of, I'll call it sections of the building. That was a way for us to help break up the facade a little bit and add some prominence to the architecture, which is really worn by the requirements within the zoning ordinance. So I think I covered in general the, the big part of the apparatus bay and the support side. Moving into the office, living area, training area, public side, I guess, of the fire station that I mentioned. The square footage is about the same as it was previous. It's rearranged and some conceptual changes occurred. This plan obviously doesn't include the sheriff, although this could be, uh, modified slightly and include the sheriff substation, which I'll show you in a few more pages down the road there. Primarily separates, as it did before, the front has the office administration area immediately adjacent to the lobby if there's service needed or public interaction needed. Um, and then there's the training area, which is adjacent to the lobby. So there's a little pre-function space or at least a combination of pre-function in the lobby. If you have visiting, not just fire station staff, visiting, uh, which could be separated from the rest of the station. That is part of how we laid that out. So you could really separate functions and activities without giving access throughout the station. Moving towards the center there, the living areas, uh, that shifted in location from where it was before. Uh, the key thing that we kind of worked through was what kind of living quarter, quality life accommodations were we able to provide. Um, there's a host of different ideas on how to do that, all being the same. You give a good place for someone to rest and be prepared for their duties. And the dorm rooms are independent, diverse one room and bunks. Um, we did study the idea of a Jack and Jill restroom in between them. So they'd have a private restroom and shower room between two rooms. Uh, in the end, we opted to look at that as a way, maybe to reduce costs, to pull that restroom facility out of the bunk room area and combine it with the major, um, locker slash restroom slash shower room area. Uh, keeping an eye on travel distance from the bunk room. Really any, any space where firefighters would congregate into the apparatus and using fifty feet is our key. Uh, you can see the furthest one is fifty feet and that's from the trainer. All the bunk rooms are within that as well as the fitness room. That's indicated by that red dash line. The, the dorm rooms themselves moved from where they were. They're basically the fitness center area where that is top right, moved over to where they are now. Couple of things kind of made that a reason or, or the right thing to do with in the planning. One of the big picture things that the, I'm going way backwards now. One of the big things we did when we started was look at how could the geometry of the buildings be a cost-effective tool and, and, so we started out with squares or rectangles. And part of that was straightening out the back wall and that came to mind, this is the, the fitness room area. And we really did that all the way around, even in the front, until we got to that ordinance thing with the ratio two to one and separating it. So we had to do a little bit of that on the front, we felt. But the driver of straightening out that back wall was create a square geometry to reduce inside, outside corner costs. So that was one of the reasons that the, the fitness and the big block area got moved to that area. Dayroom, kitchen area, basically same location, very different orientation though, um, size, shapes, kind of same. We just flipped things around, looking at the in and out of the firemen in terms of how they would operate in their day. And that seemed to make more sense, flipping the kitchen to the opposite side. And then the office area moved all the way down to the bottom of the page. Primary the same spaces, just rearranged with a little bit more refinement in terms of the, how people would move around, how they would access support space, how they would access files and how they would interact, uh, with each other and administrative staff. A couple of things I'll, you know, point out. I'll come back to the plan if I need to. That really is the overall plan, um, for the first floor. The mezzanine was covered, I, I think enough just to glance at the next sheet. It's two areas primarily. Going to the next sheet is the site plan with the sheriff's, uh, and this is including the new footprint of the currently planned fire station and the old sheriff's substation. Showing that the site still works with that, uh, arrangement. There's, uh, the same kind of refinements we did on the site elsewhere or occurred here. The main change is how public would access the site through the shared easement, park in their, their separate area. And then the sheriffs would be beyond that reading, uh, like I described to the fire station, you know, design home. Other than that, anything else is pretty much the same. If you look to the next sheet, it shows the current plan of the fire station with integration of the footprint of the sheriff's station. And I guess the key thing there is the same orientation, the two main entry points for the sheriff as the previous same with our showing side. And their access to the shared spaces is that the fire station, the sheriff's substation could share this. If you separate those two public restrooms and create corridors through there, they'd be entering into the lobby or public coming to see the sheriff would come through the lobby in between those restrooms into their, into their space. So if you look to the next sheet, you can see, um, the sheriff's substation design and their main corridor, which is where I'm saying that would continue into the lobby of the fire station in between those two restrooms. And this is a, a plan that we have reviewed with them before in work session format. And, um, I, we, I guess we got confirmation through Courtney that they're still good with this, or, or space allocation. Is that fair to say from your email?
Yeah, Lisa and Alner Sheriff confirmed that.
Pardon?
Yeah, Lisa and then the Alner Sheriff.
Well, there's, you know, if this develops, goes to the next phase of development, I'd say there's gonna be tweaks to that too. But I, I'd say this really is a good test for fit and how it integrates with the fire station is pretty easy to envision. I think if you looked at the two plans. Looking to the next sheet is the overall aerial view of how this building could look. I'll point it out, uh, in the different elevations. The fire station is gonna be what it's gonna be in terms of its, how it presents itself. It's predominantly these big doors where the apparatus come out, so that is a defining character. The other flexibility in character is, um, defined by the towers, which is, I think, again, I'll go back to the, the, the orders where it requires something on the corner site to have, you know, a distinctive element. And that's what the tower is and that it described is, um, higher than it would be, just to get to the mezzanine. It's meant to have some training possibilities within it. And I mentioned the facade modulation the ordinance requires with that ratio of two to one. You could kind of see the, um, the ins and outs of the front of the building, even to the bottom right there. We did the same thing with the two restrooms, just to add some articulation to that. It wasn't necessary, but to, you know, kind of put a check mark next to what we were trying to do in terms of ordinance requirement, we did that. When you look at the next sheet, more of the elevation front view, you can kind of see what I mean, where we're really trying to look at how do we segment this building across the front with articulation of structural elements with these, the piers in between the doors and how that really has some real definition of the change in materials. Half stone and masonry with the two tower elements. Not only does the ordinance require a corner to have some distinctive feature, but the entry to a building be clear and distinct and have some, I think it's called prominent feature. And they use a description of things like benches, seating area, flagpoles. We accommodated that with the flagpole, but also with the clock feature, something to say this is different than the tower. So it's clearly, it's not a tower as a training thing. It's for meant to be symbolic of the main entryway, towerway. The, the materials used are what you might find in traditional downtown area, clay, masonry, brick, some stone, water table and some accent bands separating it from the windows or the brick above, so it acts as a sill also. And some pointing around the openings there, very limited, but just enough to give it a little bit of a flair and define that little piece that bump out, which is the office area, something different. We also introduced something where we thought was important, so the work areas, um, within the building that weren't on the outside wall. You can see in between the entry tower and the apparatus bay, there's a, what looks like there's a, a recessed portion. That's a clear story element that's gonna get daylight back into the work areas. If you flip back to the plan, you'll see a little dash line that kind of calls that out. You don't really need to do that, but I'm just pointing out that's what it is. It's meant to bring daylight into the work area of the building. Kind of working your way around the next, um, 3D rendering or second elevation. Thing I wanted to point out there is, um, the elements at the entry tower, likewise at the, um, training tower. Looks like a big glass elements at the very top. It's a translucent panel. It's very efficient in terms of allowing daylight in, but keeping some of the heat out just because it's different than glass. And it's also gonna be helping to light that interior space a little bit. The other thing is metal roof there, just to make it a little bit different. Prominent slope roof surface is a, an architectural asphalt shingle. But on the two towers, we're suggesting a metal roof element, just to give it a little bit more prominence and quality. And working our way around to the next is the beer. As I mentioned, the ordinance requires that we do something similar, uh, to a facade that faces the residential district when it's on a, a main street site. So we couldn't necessarily suggest a cheaper something. We thought, uh, you know, different proportions of clay brick as compared to the cast stone would be an appropriate thing to help, um, you know, maybe reduce costs a little bit, but stay in compliance with the, the look all the way around the building. Couple of things to draw your attention to is a high glass along the training area, uh, in terms of the fitness training area, but access to the outdoor to get equipment in and out and also to do some outdoor training, not just the inside training. Uh, and then there's a screen wall to screen the, um, generator, which also has some acoustic value to it in terms of blocking sound. And then the access from the dayroom to an outdoor patio there would be screened by landscaping. And we faintly put in landscape trees just to give you the idea that that's what it is, but so you can see the building. You can, oh, the trees are gonna be there. And then the last rendering, uh, is the Meadowview side. Uh, you can see some of the windows up high. That's meant to be accessing to the training mezzanine. And then there's a couple of access points on grade, double doors into the work area, which will be bringing equipment in and out of. The other door by the training tower to the right is, um, payload haul, um, access for equipment. So this whole parking area is where they would come in, park, run into the, or go into the, uh, the gear room. That's where they'd gear up. or go into the gear room, that's where they'd gear up, and they'd transition right from the gear room into the apparatus bay. Very efficient flow. The next view is a variation. We looked at a couple of different things. This one was, in architectural terms, the same thing. But we looked at it as a low slope roof or no visual roof, just slope for drainage behind a parapet. So it has a more subtle silhouette to it. We didn't do elevations all the way around, this is an option. We also did a couple of variations of where the pitch roof was over the office, living quarter area, and the flat roof only would be over the apparatus bay. We wandered off into a couple of different possible scenarios. One was, what if in the future you wanted to add a second story onto this building? The likely place to do it would be over the office area, living quarters. So predominant option we were showing is option one, with the slope roof over the bay, the flat roof over the office area, saying that you could possibly structure it now, keeping it flat over the living quarters, office area, and add a second floor in the future. Just as an option for thought. So that covers primarily the package you received in your packet. Additional sheet, which I don't have, because I live in a lot of, is a cost comparison that we've been tracking in terms of fire station. Goes back quite a way, but if you look at some of the recent ones, the reason we're showing is just to give you an idea of what costs are coming in at for fire station construction. And then the second sheet is the budgeting that we did for the station.
Questions?
I have a couple.
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
One jump right out, and you brought it up earlier, David, the grading issue. Your perspectives show fairly low a site. How do you address that traffic movement on the back? Is that a slope day print that's driving up on the back of the property?
It is a slope day print. The access drive off of Eaton. If you pull into that little curb cut right now, it actually slopes down into the site. So it's going the wrong way right now. Right when you get into the property, it grays up pretty quickly. I think we have 75 feet from there to the apron, and so it'd be like a foot and 12 in that direction, something like that. It's not great, but it's much better than having the slope out front. And there's a lot more work to do in that regard than I've been able to do based on the information I have. And just to answer the rendering thing, it is so hard to render a site in slopes, topography, so we didn't do that at all, it was more of-
No, 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 and I wasn't being critical, if you're curious about your thoughts.
Yeah, we actually talked about that with the fire chief and Jason, when we were at the chemical last stages about, you know, there's going to be something we have to weigh, balance, and make a decision on. Our approach was to try to make a flat lead in the station.
Okay, thanks.
So is the service bay, is there a vehicle there or not? Is the drive, the concept plan on the site plan? It looks like there's a vehicle there.
There would be.
So would we do a run? Chief Crepp, if I'm wrong, or come out and help me. Don't we send a squad and then one bigger thing?
Yeah, certainly, the vehicles that are depicted here are not exactly where they're going to sit in the building. Most likely, the squad is going to sit to the far right, more closest to the washroom, and then the engine and two tankers. And then that last bay, the service bay, is where ultimately the tower would go when we get that. And then everything on the backside is the support vehicles that we have, the extra utility, the gator, the hard truck that you've got in agreement with the store. There's Squad Five Three will be in there until we get it moved out to the Webster Station if it's on. The smoke trailer or the house trailer, fire prevention trailer, would end up being in this building as well. So this is just depicting vehicles. It's not necessarily exactly where they're going to sit.
No leaf machine or anything?
No leaf, well, hopefully you put it in 81 Ford.
Well, no, I think if we, I'll pull up with one note. If we actually, my real question was, are we going to be deploying out the back and the front on the run? And that seems like you would, you're talking about the, well, yes, but not initially, right?
Initially, the first truck's coming out, we'll put it on the front. And then if the support vehicles, guys come in later and pick up other vehicles, they most likely would go out the back. The vehicles that run first out, I need to get out quickly up before they go in.
David, I didn't follow the whole, how the sheriff blends into this with the bathrooms very well. It looks to me like the bathrooms go away.
Sorry, but let's leave the explanation till- One of the bathroom goes away and the other becomes a hallway, basically.
But the bathrooms don't show up in the-
They're not meant to show up in the sheriff's. So imagine they're not in the sheriff's plan, they're remaining in the fire plan, and then the sheriff never happens. So the lower one in the fire plan would shift down and fill that blue hashed area, creating a corridor between the two of them. Does that make sense now?
No, it looks like the sheriff's spot is taking up the-
Don't get hung up on the sheriff's plan. It's the old sheriff's plan. So here's the, this bathroom.
This sheet, don't pay attention to this sheet?
Don't get hung up on it. You can pay attention to it, that all the elements are still there. But this bathroom here, that's when it moves down to there. Now there's a corridor going through here. So when you look at the sheriff's plan, you can see that corridor flooding into nothing. That corridor would be the thing going through those bathrooms.
Okay, so you just didn't draw that the way it, okay.
I only got the feedback from Sheriff kind of last week, so.
Yeah, we were peddling as I speak.
David, if I may, is that something that we could do right off the bat, in case the sheriffs add on later?
Absolutely.
Where do you have the garbage?
Internal.
So the garbage truck drives through the building?
No, I didn't mean to be sarcastic.
It's okay.
What I meant is we do not have a trash enclosure outside on the site. We would do that internal. And we haven't really worked out where yet, but we just did one on site.
Generally, we would, we only generate enough trash for a residential trash can.
They only have a toter, they don't have a dumpster.
Right, that's how it is today, and we know it. So they'll bring their toters out to the street then?
We can do that.
Is that that?
They go on the site now, they come from.
Right.
And we could do that either on Eaton Corridor or on LeMay Road, whatever they prefer to do. It'd be a waste to have a dumpster.
That's funny. So it seems like a big change with this is there's a lot of more training opportunities on the western side of the building. Would that be fair?
Yes.
So the square footage went up?
It did. About 2,000 square feet.
So about 10%.
Correct.
It looks like it'd be possible, if need be, to have two of the engines or tankers back in one of the bays. It's not ideal all the time, but-
Yeah, 82 foot isn't going to allow that without being real tight, but it is possible to do that. You'd have to find a spot for the other smaller vehicles, so it's easier to put one large than a small one.
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. We did that, we could, like you say, it's possible, but we would be out of compliance with the guidelines, or we could do it.
All right.
I'd rather it be a big one than a little.
I should have prefaced, I'm asking for flexibility. If something happens and, like, the drain is completely clogged and you just can't get it, or-
A big door goes down or something.
Yeah. So one of the things for these types of large projects is they'll often be designed so that you can add a bay to the end if you find out the bids come in low. My understanding of the reason why it's structured this way with the, kind of the support side on the edge of the building as opposed to next to the living areas in between, so we could do that type of thing where bid at four bays and maybe a fifth extra bay if it comes in, is that because of the nature of our fire department with the hybrid, which we're likely to have for many, many years, is you want to have that service thing to the outside of the building, so when they come in with personal vehicles, they're able to get their PPE immediately without running through the building. Is that in the ballpark?
That's part of it. The other was the contamination side, I think we wanted to be as far away from the clean side of the building as possible.
But the staff are parking on the other side, right?
They're parking immediately next to the support side, west side.
The full-time staff would park on the east side, or there were staff parking, paid-on-call guys would come in and respond if they need to get to that west side.
Paid-on-call, or?
Yes.
And then anybody that comes in for training or things like that.
Do we have to add anything or modify the stormwater system as a result of all this data, building?
I'll say without real definition, no. We have to accommodate what we're producing here into existing infrastructure. There are some other utility modifications that are, I'll say, not unusual, but we wouldn't wish for. And we have to move power, incoming power, where putting it right where it is now is the apron, so we have to make some adjustments for that.
So what's the distance from the center of the driveway to the intersection? To the center of the intersection, thereabouts?
Oh, okay, I knew what you mean, from Meadowview?
Yeah.
I can give you a pretty good guess. Unless Andrew's here, he could probably tell. My side chick is not here yet. I think he thinks he needs it. I would say it is probably 300 or closer 400 feet, center of Meadowview, the center of the apron. And this is what I mean, because I don't know if I really caught it the way you meant it. Center of the-
Yeah.
The center of Meadowview, about 400 feet.
Thank you.
Maybe it's there.
Well, I was going to say, is it really, because you've got 66 feet of parking lot, right? And it looks like maybe it's double or triple, it looks like it's about, I guess it was about half of what you said.
I would disagree.
Okay.
I'm using my pencil as a scale. And I'm using that 75-foot mark for the property line of the building, turning it 90 degrees plus almost three. I have a different scale drawing than you do.
Yeah, I was just using the width of the parking lot that's on the left side of the building.
Gotcha.
Has a 66-foot, am I doing math right there, 30 feet of an aisle?
Yeah, yes, you are.
It looks like if you took that and went, it'd be like three times from the center to the-
I did my math wrong. You're right there. So it's about half that, yes. Because I used 75, I used 75 like I'm nervous, I apologize.
That's okay, all right, so more like 200, that's okay.
Yeah, yep.
This west part, may I ask a question?
Oh, sure, yeah, Julie, jump up, please.
Parking lot here on the west, is that a fence that's across there?
No, it's open area.
Looks like you've got something here with dividing those last few spots.
Do you mind if I come and sit here for a moment? No, not sure.
This thing right here, what is this?
Although, that's a string dimension, so that's just telling me that's 18 feet.
Thank you. I thought it was a fence up there.
No, purposely, we don't have any fences on the site.
I wouldn't think so, thank you.
It's up here, it's rush. Or a screen wall and landscape wall, that's it.
So would it be accurate to say, aside from the exterior architecture, which is in a manner that complies with our own ordinance, the building is kind of like middling in the finish? It's not the high-end with roso floors or fancy pant stuff. It's, it doesn't have CMU for the interior walls, except for required for fire and electrical stuff. It's-
That's fair assessment. If I use good, better, best, it's good, better.
Yep.
And on the outside, it's elevated. The image on the outside, based on the ordinance, is going to present something different on the inside. It's going to look more high-end on the outside than it is on the inside.
All right, and so that's-
There is no difference, but it's, there is-
Which is a shame, I love that product. But, and so that's how you're able to get these elevations to be right in line with the new, the newer construction, and actually very competitive with the per square foot costs.
Yes. Yeah, we did a number of valley planning things along the way, knowing that cost is always an issue. And we tried to make it not ultra-conservative in pricing either. We did it as though if we were bidding this job, we'd be second, maybe third. We don't want to be the little bidder, but we don't want to be the high guy either. So this is a reasonable expectation on bid day, what you would get. We were able to do that, just exactly what you pointed out. The outside is presenting something that looks like we chose the best one, I'll think. In the packet, you probably saw there's an itemization of what kind of material choices.
Yeah.
On the Michigan Fire Station summary list that you added in, what's the Dexter Fire Station?
It's old data from when, I might have done this a year ago.
Okay, all right, so, gotcha.
There might be two or three of them that are in fill, yet to be determined. I'd love to update that, though.
If I may on that chart, I just found out tonight too, David, the three stations that were numbered stations, I think there was a number 43 and another number two or something, those were substations, not headquarters stations.
Correct, yep.
So those are down in that $2, $3 million range, or somewhere lower. But those are stations that don't have all the amenities that this station does as a main station. So the top two there were public safety. I'm sure they have everything that's in these, and I think we're in under one of those, maybe over the other one. But I just want to make sure people know that those three stations probably only have two bays and probably don't have a full classroom.
Or living quarters.
Or maybe not living quarters.
I know for a fact some don't have living quarters. And it's really not meant to be a direct comparison to this, it's just giving an idea, and then a great variation among them. But recently, what I've seen, is when we talk about fire station costs, people say, oh, leave, can't be that much. But the reality is, these are real numbers when they're bid. Not all of those are actual bid numbers, or budget numbers and that sort of thing. Most of them are.
And they did include the Dr. Haltest and what's your Haltest layout so that you guys can see what's either in those or planted in those, during the package?
You showed an option with a low-profile or no-show roof.
Mm-hmm.
Does that do the cost?
Reduces it not much.
Ralph?
I knew somebody was going to ask me that.
Well, yeah, I'm not going to make any bones about it. This is an $8 million project right now, so a little bit of consternation about it.
Do you have a second, if you don't want to?
I'll probably be asking a lot of questions about how we can reduce the cost.
I just happened to have a list.
Scott, what was your question again? I didn't catch it off.
David showed an option in the renderings of a no-show roof. If you look at one of the front elevations, there's an option for no-show roof. My question was, how much does that reduce the cost from what's in here? This is, this $7.4 million price tag is- This is, this $7.4 million price tag is for the big roof. I want to know how much the no-show roof option reduces that.
About $70,000.
$70,000. Okay.
So what, what unit cost did you use? Or how did you get to some of these other numbers, though?
We didn't use purely a unit number.
Okay.
But if I had to break it down for you, the two major components are the ground-level construction and the mezzanine. It's roughly $300 a foot before ground floor and $150 for mezzanine. That's not including site costs, obviously. It's separating the building from the site. And there's variation from that, too. The training mezzanine side is compared to the infrastructure side slightly more. The part of the building on the ground, the office-living area, is compared to the apparatus, open apparatus, is slightly more. It's a balance between those two major components and then there's subdivisions within each of those.
Okay. So on the budget worksheet, the building envelope and superstructure, that includes the exterior?
Yeah.
All the outside stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. And building infrastructure includes?
MEP. Counter-electrical plumbing. With the exception of the generator, which is in the site side. The site number was electrical for lighting on the outside in terms of pole lighting and also generator.
Just following up on the sheet, your cost table. These look like they're rolled up from more detailed sheets, right?
They are.
Is it possible to be copies of that?
It is.
Appreciate it. Great. Thank you.
Do staff have any questions?
Just a last files. That's nice.
Dan and Kurt saw early, saw draft and had made that conversation with them about, you know, any meetings this year or thoughts that they had.
So response wouldn't leave Eaton Court, would it?
Whatever. Eaton Court.
Yeah, Eaton Court.
That's the primary response out on the initial call. Other guys coming in later, picking up extra equipment or additional equipment, could go out that way.
Okay.
But because of their second due out, they can, I know the concern was noise. But because their second due out, they wouldn't have to turn on lights and sirens until they got out on An Arbor Street.
Thank you. So did the committee have a recommendation on? Did you get done with everything you wanted to get done with? Or I mean, I can bring the, what we charged you with.
I think we went down the list, Zach, unless we're missing anything.
Was Zach on the meeting?
No, but Zach was the one that drafted what the committee was supposed to do.
Oh, yeah. No, it's not. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to go there that much. I was just trying to find out.
The rendering was in the slight layout.
Find out if five means of an hour, if you need to still be doing something or where we're supposed to be.
Does Chief David have anything that you think more work needs to be done on?
Well, I guess my response would really be reaction to whatever we hear from you. I mean, follow-up on the detail of the budget. If there were some, maybe as Zach was saying, the cost in the envelope, the facade, if that needed to be looked at in terms of more value planning, I would do that, but there's not a lot of latitude based on the ordinance. And I think the plan itself is pretty well nailed down to being real efficient and functional. So the only area, I think, if you were saying, okay, go back and bring more, it would be in site development. That's lesser to find in certainty than the rest. That would be the only thing, other than if you feel comfortable where you are, I'm prepared to move ahead into the next level of development.
I'm pleased to see the training options included in, in the plan.
It was a really good outgrowth of collaboration and just really good shredding of ideas and possibilities. And some of it came with just as being a byproduct of the other functions of the station. So it was a nice win-win for the building plan.
So Chief, as you look at this compared to what's going on in Webster and the fact that the runs continue to grow in the Townships, does it seem imbalanced?
Not really. As I've talked before, there are almost an equal number of runs in the Townships as there are in the city. And if you have to look at the density of those runs in the city, in the city, that same number of runs is occurring within a two-and-a-half-square-mile area. So that's where the bulk of our resources are used majority of the time. But again, having the main station down here where we have to deal with those functions, having it close to our employee base means that we have to have the additional equipment here and be able to do the things that we need to do as far as taking care of our equipment. I don't think it's out of line, line at all where we need to be. I will say what's nice about this station is, and I rarely make a statement so strong, but we've talked about a 40, 50-year, 60-year station. I think this building does it for you. There's two ways fire stations grow. They either add people or they add new missions. And by adding new mission, I would say a dive team or a hazmat team or something like that. I don't see Dexter doing that, so I don't see that you're ever going to need more bays. What Dexter's going to need here in all three stations is room for more people. Eventually, you'll, you'll add on people. And I think this station does it by having, having more funk crews in there. So I think this station sets you up for success in the long future, not, not the short future. And it's most likely right-sized. I'll stand on that, that it's right-sized right now.
I didn't, I didn't expect the size to go up. Did anybody?
Didn't know. So they set out. I wasn't sure whether it would or not.
Do we have a discussion of next steps or are we pretty well done for now?
What are we doing? What is the next step?
I don't know. That's why I asked the question. We had time, but I'd ask it.
Yeah. Well...
I mean, do you think you have enough to talk to the public about a millage? I don't either. I think it's a ridiculous amount of money to pay for a fire station, but this isn't my project. It's for reuse, so... But I mean, that was the goal, right? Was to get to a point where we would be able to provide clear information to the public so that they could make a coherent decision on a millage. So do we need more information than this? I mean, council does eventually need to decide where the share of it can go.
As I said, I'd like to see the breakdowns on some of these items. I mean, you've got a $7.4 million estimate with a $1.8 million line item, a $1.4 million, a $1.4 million line item. I want to see those broken out. I understand that. And it, I would want that even if I didn't think there's too much money. Because if I'm going to ask people to spend money, I want to be able to say, this is why I think it's fair.
The other thing that's a little unclear, too, is the outfitting and what DFD provides versus what the SDE provides as far as some of the appliance and things. I don't know if that's just something that has to be worked out with DFD or it's just whatever Dexter Township did, that Webster's planning to do. But, you know, that's a little bit unclear, you know? Because David included it all because we wanted to get a true project cost. I think it would be great if this was the department for all three communities and that everybody was paying it together, then I think that it would be fine. But to be a third of the runs and overdouble the cost just seems unfair to 400 people, including myself.
Yeah, not, really not even the third anymore.
Yeah.
Last two years have shown that.
Well, we could change our zoning garden so we could build a Dollar General fire station. That would cut down the cost from breaking...
Well, we talked about that. I mean, showing it more like some of the other stuff in the community. Or we show it the way that it's supposed to be. And so we figured we'd start with what it's supposed to be. I mean, we make developers know what it's supposed to be.
I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I think personally, I want to think things through. I would like to see the breakdown of costs. That's a good suggestion, Scott.
Are we going to ask for that? The breakdown cost?
Yeah, he's got it. He's got it.
So if I have a follow-up question to that. So the breakdown is breakdown enough for me to understand if I'm going in the right area? I'm wondering if it will be enough for you to do what you want to determine.
That's pretty good.
If travel won't be enough when you see it, is my guess.
I can't say until I see it.
Well, my point is, do I, do I do something more to it or do I just send you what I have and then you get to it?
I think probably the easiest, from my perspective, my day, is the easiest is to send us what you have. That's almost zero effort, right?
Pretty close to the zero.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I'm going to take it from there.
Yeah. Yeah. We're not making decisions.
This guy then, so that's good.
Just put in some magnitude. I think those four lines are from about 30. So there'll be 30 lines, roughly 30 lines of other end.
That's good.
Yeah. That's a good break.
What happens if we, excuse me, what happens if you don't have the drive-off of Meadowview? I mean, are two entrances or three not enough? We have to have four?
That would function really efficiently for a paid-on-call to access and exit the site without getting interference with the apparatus movement. You wouldn't want them to leave onto Dexter and An Arbor. And you try not to have them exiting in maybe conflict onto Eaton. That's less of a concern, but I think it's going to add much better function if you have it.
But the chief indicated that the primary response is going out the front.
Yeah. I just think it's much better function. I'm not playing for the common.
Yeah, that's okay.
Playing for that.
Will there be like a traffic signal at this point? Or we're going to depend on people hearing the noise and stopping?
I can tell you what we thought. I can tell you what we thought. We were not playing for a traffic signal.
Okay. Well, where I was going to say, do we have another expense to do that?
It's not included. It's generally around $75,000.
Okay.
I mean, there is ways of to keep people from blocking them. Yeah. Signing it so that people don't block the...
Other than this?
Yeah, just some signs.
As opposed to so-called...
I've seen that before at other stations.
I think with my experience here in Dexter is it's either wide open or it's packed in. There's no in-between in those hours in the morning and hours at night when people are commuting and the school buses. No matter what, you put a light up there, people are going to be underneath the light by the time it turns on. But any other time during the day, it's pretty much wide open. We can get out there. So I don't know that that's going to be a real benefit to us at this point. Just my two cents on, wouldn't be an expense, I reckon.
Just talking about signs, like at traffic level, you know, emergency vehicle exit or something.
For that slow-moving traffic, I'd do not block driveway, that kind of thing.
Is the west side of the building flush with the parking lot up to the doors? Or is that side line actually red?
It's a curve. The curve is where the wheels stop the cars.
Okay, we want to take a few minutes of the work session to talk about the city hall, so...
Sure.
So it's provided in the packet?
Sure.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, chief.
You're part of the city hall.
Yeah.
Don't walk away.
Okay.
I just saw the chief walking away, so I didn't think of it.
Yeah. In there, there was a couple of concepts, quick concepts for the Monument Park.
Yes.
And we also had some build-out pricing for the rear lawn. And I don't, I... I know with the, the question that got asked of you was whether, you know, doing a building there in Monument Park would be more expensive than renovating 8040. To me, it was a question, that question didn't need to be asked. It was, you know, building a new building is going to cost more than a renovation. What I was more interested in was how much more is a new building going to cost versus the renovation? And I know it'd be plus the property acquisition. But I was trying to figure out, okay, if we had a chance to buy that property in the long run, would it be desirable enough to then want to spend the money to acquire the property and build a new building there just because of the location and the presence in town versus renovating 140? It's just something that, you know, I was curious about. Because, you know, we talked about planning ahead. You know, we know it's not going to be available for three years. So, you know, this is planning out. And it's, it's kind of a situation where that may be our only opportunity to ever acquire that property and build a building to give some presence at that location. So that's, that's where I was looking at, trying to figure out, you know, building a two-story, three-story structure there, you know, at the, the end of Monument Park, whether that would, you know... I didn't know, you know, whether, like, say if you do three stories versus two stories, are you saving some money? Because your footprint is, you know, we're kind of tight on the footprint there. Because your footprint is, you know, we're kind of tight on the footprint there. So, that's kind of where the, my thoughts and, you know, things were coming from.
And I'm not happy to take it to anywhere near that level of detail because my understanding was, does it cost more or less than renovating 8140? And he answered that, but any more than that's gonna take actual work. And I'm not, not gonna get into the situation like we were last year where he was doing stuff and we didn't pay. Well, not that we didn't pay or that we paid, you know, we didn't know how much it was in the cost, but we paid at the end, so.
But this is just in general terms, you know, as to, you know, do you save, conserve what mine, like, you know, if you go up versus.
I could attempt to give you some framework of an answer to that. So, in thinking about the conversation I heard you guys had last time I was here, I created something which I haven't shared yet with Courtney that I said maybe I would. It's more of a questionnaire of things that I will send. I did think about that a little bit, and that site, of all other things I've ever heard, is the most comparable. So, my estimation of the increase in cost versus that one is probably more relative to any of the other sites I've heard. And I would estimate based on what I know about 8140 and the scheme in the beginning, it may want to be, here, if you remember the number now, which requires some pretty sophisticated expansion to it. It wasn't easy just to clean it up and move into it. There was some addition to it. So, that had a number relative to that kind of complicated construction. And it was 2.9, and I don't remember what season of construction that was, whether it was last spring or this fall. But I would estimate a new building, two stories, as comparison would be about 20% to 50 to 20% higher. If you go higher, reduce your footprint, it's probably gonna be even more. To go up, it'll be more, it'll get more possible. Because you'll get less functional usable space and you'll have to have an additional cost for the vertical racks plus two stairs, and you lose foot speed efficiency. I would say two stories work. My tester fit said two stories would work. This is not how much park you feel comfortable with. Just to give you some sense.
Thank you.
I'd be more than happy to look into it in more detail.
Get the fire straightened out first.
Well, show us that something fits there. I think, obviously, we have a little bit of a different configuration of Central Street on the one side of it. Might make things a little bit different than. So, take a five-minute break before we turn to me?
Yes.
David, thank you. David, you're very, appreciate it.
And I will follow.
Thank you for helping answer the questions. The anticipation committee, Tal Jason, thank you as well.
Oh, yeah, there's someone in the back today.
A, a six, a, a, yes, we're department, yeah. You have to get to a meeting. Can we discuss one that you just added, our scout cabin? Come here, listen and take notes.
It also reminded me that we can vary poorly like street lighting in the US compared to every other country.
Hi, Doug. Hello.
So, I dressed in leer, just get to this.
I know.
Hi, girl, how are you? So, what's, what's the big project here? Are you just tunneling under the house?
Well, we're just replacing that table.
Oh, I see. Okay, gotcha.
Welcome Biden office. It's the only question, when will.
That, right, yeah, gotcha.
It's doing this right now. Okay, let's take it out.
Yeah, it's time.
What are things?
Good, good, busy. I like busy. Yeah, it's good.
Fire station I'm talking about.
Yeah, probably.
Email me when we have them in the back.
You have a car earlier.
It's an interesting. Because neither of us think status quo.
Extra area of fire department simply. Extra area of fire department. The library.
So, it's a mission when they have.
Oh, really? The businesses like are already. Are you planning? I think the businesses are in fact. Oh, I see. Oh, that's why they say consideration.
Finally, turn.
Something like this part of it actually is useful for like. I think we talked about it at the cabin, because I think this is the part you really want to be attention to, because it has, you know, it's very. Citizenship of the power. Yes, I do.
Think about it, we had.
I have my phone, I just don't have a, I'm not sure.
I don't know. Okay, hello, everybody. Good evening. I have seven o'clock, and I'd like to ask everyone to pardon me by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me in the back? Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dow.
Here.
Councilmember Cousins will be absent this evening. Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Councilmember Michelle?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Student Brett Colver and Malik are both absent and present. Mayor Field.
Here. We have two sets of meeting minutes to approve this evening, one from our regular city council meeting on September 23rd, and the second from a special city council meeting on October 3rd.
Move the date to seven minutes.
Second.
Moved by Smith, second by Fisher. Thank you both. Any discussion or comments, Mr. Smith?
I have two minor things. On page one, the, the regular council minutes, the date is incorrect. Should be the 23rd. And then on the page seven, which is the first page of the special city council meeting, and under H, which got moved up, changed the word movie to move. Motion Smith support Val to move instead of movie.
That would be a horrible movie, by the way.
I'd make.
And that was the only change.
Okay. Ms. Fisher, anything to add? Other members of council? No comments? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the meeting minutes with two small corrections. Sitting by and saying aye please?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Uh, the posted agenda had Jennifer Olstead from Annover Spark coming this evening, but she notified us this morning that she had something come up, or doesn't come up with the family, so she's not able to be here tonight and will be at a future meeting, to be determined. So, we're down to item E, approval of the agenda. There is additional, um, stuff on the vacating of an alley. Yes. And then there's also some pictures.
Those go along with the proposal for, uh, considering.
Okay, so there's a picture for item, hold on a second.
Item four, L four.
L four. Thank you.
Then we just have to add Halloween for three hours. I forgot to put that on. Halloween, 5:30 to 7:30, is it consented?
Okay, adding Halloween as a consent item. So, we gotta add, add consideration of Halloween hours from five, what are, what are the?
It's the 5:30 to 7:30.
I just wanted to make sure we record them correctly. All right, so, who had the motion? Fisher, and a second by Smith, was it? Okay, to approve the agenda, the addition of, as J two. Any discussion required? All seen, no comments? All those in favor approving the agenda, sitting by and saying aye please?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening, so we're on page two of the agenda. We're down to non-arranged participation. This is the first of two opportunities on the agenda for those of you in the audience to speak on any topic. If you wish to speak, we ask that you state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Does anyone wish to speak this evening?
Productions or Boy Scouts?
Are the Boy Scouts here for any particular reasons? That we should know about, maybe? Maybe we can prove you're here by if you just give us your name and reason. Come on up to the podium. Yeah, come on up. We're, we're friendly.
My name's Daniel Edwards, and I'm here to complete a merit badge for Eagle Scout called Citizenship of the Community.
Great, welcome.
Uh, I am Martino Favasi, and I am here for the same reason.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, thank you.
They might be here for another reason, that's okay. All right, thank you for introducing yourselves.
You're not, we're all not here for the same reason, but I think there's somebody in the back that is here for another reason. She's here with.
She's working ready, she's.
Oh, okay, but she is here with.
Hey.
Good, welcome.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll move down to communications. There are two in the packet, our upcoming meeting list and our signed calendar. I'm not sure if there's any changes needed to any of those things. I can tell you that the lots meeting on October 16th has been canceled, or was canceled this week. Okay, I'll keep the meeting moving. Everybody must be interested in getting to the Lions game. I wore the colors. Uh, report is up next, and our first report this evening is from our Public Services Superintendent. Dan, how are you?
Good. Good evening, council.
Good evening, sir. And he has this Lions logo on?
Just to remind you, I know.
I'm on it, 7:06, buddy, we're working.
Uh, I provided a written report in your council packet, and I'd like to start with a couple of updates on projects we got going on. Forest Street, Sidewalk, Stormwater work, we got grass coming up.
Looks good, very good.
Yeah, I think it looks really good. Central Street, I stopped by there before I came to the meeting, and they were putting the last layer down to Ashwall. Tomorrow, they're supposed to be cutting crosswalks and weather permitting. Nice.
Remind me where they're gonna start with those? Which, do you know where they'll start?
It doesn't really matter, I guess, I just thought.
I thought it was Monument Park and Fifth Street.
I think it's, I want to say it's fourth and then the one at Monument Park.
You still wanted to be able to get.
Oh, fourth, yeah. And then the middle, last.
And I don't know if you've had a chance to go down there, but that looks really nice.
It does.
We can do that in front of my house, and that turned out really well.
I thought the project was gonna get to your house the way it was going.
It kinda did. We picked up the stormwater, you know, that we left a few years ago, so I think it's been really good.
It does, it looks really good.
My last update is, we have, got Hydro C down at the wastewater plant, so we're ready for Thursday. Do you have?
Oh. And that starts again at four or?
Four to six.
Four to six.
And we're, I talked to Evan D's marketing person, and you can tell he does these a lot, and I don't. But it's, we're not, it's gonna be more of an open house style, you know, people can come in, we'll take small groups on tours, there's nothing, they're gonna have some sirens, donums, so it's, you know, kind of a laid back, though, like speeches, maybe some. Yeah, some tent against the weather, and then some like before photos and stuff, but nothing super normal.
That's great. So, so if you really want to know what goes on in government, you can come to the wastewater treatment plant, see all the interesting things that go on there. They're putting them on the calendar right now.
Also, on page 14 and 15, where you reported, the fourth well is down behind the Ashwall course, Ryan Drive, down there. Put some stone in there, because we had a problem this spring trying to do provided maintenance, we couldn't get the big trucks down there, so we put stone in there, which would give us year-round access, obviously, that we needed. But I did get a phone call from a resident that was concerned about what it looked like. And then the one photograph on page 14, that's looking in between the two houses, obviously, I didn't go stand on their, their back decks. So, I told her I would ask if maybe we could place some trees back there to maybe block that, if that's something council would support. Yeah, do evergraze or something, or. Something, we'd figure out. Aridides or something? Right. I think you guys can figure that out.
Okay. Does anybody have a mind with that?
The only other thing that I think that might potentially be an issue is, I don't, they, I don't think they know how much property they own back there. They only own about 20 feet off the back, and they're mowing considerably more. So, I asked Chris Donikowski, he hasn't got to it yet, to survey it for us. it for us, so we know exactly where it is. But sometimes you gotta be careful what you ask for.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any questions?
No questions other than... Okay, thank you very much. I think we're good, Dan. Thank you. Next up this evening is our report from our Community Development Manager. Michelle, good evening, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you this evening?
Good.
A little distracted. How's council this morning?
Long day.
It has been a long day, yes, yes. Okay, so you've got my report in front of you, but before I go into the updates, and I do have a few, do you have any questions for me?
So the ZBA meeting on the 21st canceled or not canceled? I thought it was happening.
The DDA October?
No, the ZBA October 21st.
It is happening.
Happening.
Yes.
You don't have a public hearing, but you're doing...
Right, she withdrew, and that was just miscommunication on my part.
Okay, because you're gonna adopt minutes and bylaws?
Yes.
Okay, but no public hearing?
Yes. The November ZBA meeting will end up getting canceled.
Okay, thanks.
Because of the...
Oh, right, not being able to use the...
Okay. Well, if you don't have any questions for me, then I'm gonna jump right into this. Massacre Plan has been updated, Planning Commission made their final little tweaks to it. We had very little input, very little input from the surrounding communities or agencies. The few comments that we had, Planning Commission reviewed them, made changes or not as noted. Excuse me. And they've set the public hearing for November, their November 4th meeting. They will get, I've got the final draft from Megan, she made those final changes, edits that Planning Commission asked for. The document arrived this afternoon, I'll be looking it over tomorrow, so that it's ready to be printed when the public hearing notice goes in the paper tomorrow. I will be, it'll get put online, there'll be a copy or two in the office for people to look at. We'll also send a copy down to the library, so that if people are there and wanna look at it, there's a copy there as well. Excuse me. Okay, so that's the Planning Commission. The Michigan logos, the signs for Jolly Pumpkin.
Michelle, can you back up just a little bit?
Sure.
On the Planning Commission's note?
Yes, sir.
So relative to Mr. Lansky's email that you mentioned about traffic and the bullet that talks about identifies the need for a study to determine if it could mitigate congestion?
Right.
To what level?
That is to be decided. There's, you'll remember there's an implementation table in that implementation section that lays out different, a number of different projects and assigns the responsibility and gives a timeframe. That's where that study is, besides also the text in the document. So how that gets, what that scope of work would be, would be something that's open for both Planning Commission and Council to coordinate on.
Yeah, my point is that mitigation is obviously a subjective...
Absolutely.
Or congestion, congestion is a subjective...
Right, it's extremely broad.
Subjective thing, so.
Yeah, okay. So the Trailways are signs. I met with Nate from Michigan Logos last week. We walked Dan Hoy. We were supposed to walk Baker Road with the Road Commission. Unfortunately, one of the people we were meeting with was sick and the other had a family emergency. So I met with Nate, we looked at Baker Road anyway and we looked at Dan Hoy. There are a couple of signs on Dan Hoy. One is the, one is the sign that says Dexter, sorry, hang on, I've got it. One's a right turn only, because it starts the D cell lane. There isn't another one until you're almost to the turn. They will, they will, they are amenable, let me put it that way, to putting the logo sign on an existing pole instead of putting another pole in the ground, which is something that I, if I remember, what you were looking for, and not to just put a bunch of signs. The thing I'll have to work with Patrick and Marcus on is, is there, does there need to be a clearance under that sign? And if so, then we may have to raise the pole. So we don't need the one on Dan Hoy. And as far as the Baker Road one, we may have an alternative to not even putting one on County Right of Way, because that would also have to be a shared sign. I don't know if the county will do that. This will really be the first time the county even permits it, so. We identified a number of potential locations where a shared situation was. And the one that Michigan Logos actually likes the best, and I need your feedback on it. When you come up to the roundabout, there's a sign on the corner of Dan Hoy and Baker that one says Baker Road, one says Dan Hoy with a little arrow. They'd like to put the logo sign on one of the posts of the Dan Hoy sign. I knew I should've had pictures.
Well, we can put this in your next report, too, it's not a rush.
Right.
It's not, it's gonna be displayed within the next two weeks.
Okay. So those are the things, so I will follow up with you again on that. Some more reviews coming out of our industrial park. So, you know, K-Space just came through with their expansion on one of the pieces of property that they own to the north. North of that is another two acre parcel that they own, and they have agreed to sell it to UIS, and UIS can now do their expansion. So that'll be coming in sometime next year, the expansion plan, but the sale will be going to be relatively quickly. As you know, Maui Properties, which is Dave Hughes, owns the large portion, as you come into the industrial park. He has agreed to sell one of the original lots, Lot 13, which is two acres, if I'm not mistaken, to Doors and Doors. They worked out an arrangement that they could use that, so I'm trading some messages right now with Chuck Matts to find out exactly what, you know, what we might see on the horizon there. I have a meeting with Steve Jensen, he's the pharmacist, owns Jensen's Pharmacy in Saline. It looks like he's interested in opening a small pharmacy here in the city, in Duster Crossing. I do not know right now what space that will be, but I hope to have more details by the time your next meeting comes.
Thank you.
LaFontaine. So we all know that they have parking issues. They don't have enough room for their inventory. Some of that, they have control over how much they order. Some of it, though, they don't have as much control over. They get X number from the factory and they don't have any control over that. It was very interesting talking with them, how they have to, it's hard managing the business. They knew a strike could come on and if so, they didn't know how long it would take, but they have to be prepared for that. In this case, the strike is going on a long time, that's affecting inventories. By them having more inventory now helps them navigate through these more difficult times that the strike is producing. With that said, they, employees are allowed to park on the Dan Hoy side of Ryan Drive that afflicts LaFontaine, but only in that portion that afflicts their property. They aren't permitted to park in front of a community park or go down into the subdivision. For the most part, you know, we've worked out the trial area. If somebody, you know, parks a new car there, you gotta move it. They've been extremely receptive. They've acted on things and got them out of the way before I even hear about them, so that by the time somebody's come into it or complained to me, they've already taken care of it. So I have to say, they have been very proactive and receptive and working very hard to try and stay within the rules and rights that we have. I am working with Patrick and Marcus right now, because the employees aren't doing it, but sometimes people who come to visit the dealership, they're parking in the driveway approach, right up to the point where the sidewalk would be. And that presents a problem for people who are riding their bikes and walking. Somebody driving in may not see, you would hope that somebody that's walking or riding their bike would have enough forethought to, you know, not just run through or bike through, but pay attention to. So in talking with LaFontaine and talking with Courtney, the sheriff cannot ticket somebody who's in an approach here. It's not against the law unless we say it's against the law. So putting a sign on Ryan Drive a few feet before the driveway approach actually starts, no parking beyond the sign, will hopefully prevent anybody from parking, but if they do, the sheriff can then ticket. So right now Patrick and Marcus are studying the warrants and I presume they will meet the warrants and will come back with the request. Any questions? I am working with Annover Spark on the business summit. I had hoped that we would have one earlier this year, we're coming down to the end, but we're working on it. The biggest thing is, when you're trying to have a business summit that's, you know, a breakfast, networking, just basic updates, I need a big space or a fair amount of space. I love using the library, but they don't open until noon. Sometimes there are things going on in the morning here, so I can't do it here. The businesses are always very generous, they don't all have the same, they don't all have space, and I can't always go to Northern United and ask them to be all the time for it. So I did have a conversation with the sales manager at LaFontaine. They have a large space. I can do a networking and they're willing to host it, so we're just figuring out the last few details, but either the 13th or 14th of November, and I should be sending out a safe date by the end of this week. Let's see. The last one... Oh, the last one's just beyond vacation and you have, in my report it says that the process is, as I've outlined it, for Mr. Smith as well as in the future. That's what I passed out to you. I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, because it's just what's given to you, but if you've got any questions about it, let me know. I think it's a sound process for considering them in the future, so. You can let me know if you want something more formal, if you want it to be something where the application goes to the Planning Commission, not the council. I try to keep them simple and comprehensive, so just give me your feedback when you have a chance. Do you think or not, that's it?
Good report.
Thank you.
Questions, Michelle? Thank you for your work and everything.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything to mention under any of the board commission reports? See if they bolded, but...
Well, I'll throw out here the CapDart organized, now it's representative of Lazen斯基 Transportation Town Hall, Saturday, October 19th, 10 to 2, Chelsea Senior Center. You have plenty of time to get home from that before the Michigan Penn State game now, on account of the game being late at night.
Well, that was in the last email update, too, so it's a Facebook.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move down to City Manager report, please.
So we haven't heard back anything yet from the family on the 75-25 parent of a drive purchase. If we do, we'll let you know, but I haven't seen anything yet. Justin had put in here about the auction and we ended up with the final tally total being $5,600. So the price has gone up considerably in the last day, like they generally do. So one, the leaf machine, our old leaf machine was actually purchased from a city in Ohio, or purchased by a city in Ohio. And then the mower was purchased from somebody in Texas, so I'm gonna be kinda surprised at that with those three, but anyway, it's been a really good way to raise a little bit of extra revenue and get rid of some things we don't need anymore. I did put in the report about the Central Street O-HM, and asked if we wanted to do anything to kinda commemorate the opening of the road, just because this is a culmination of a, I mean, we started design, I think, in '09. The first instruction was 2012 of Central Street. This is the last block, so if council wants to do something like that, I think the last one we did was the Main Street Bridge, yeah. You know, but it doesn't have to be anything extremely elaborate, but we have about two weeks, I think, because the crosswalks will need time to cure, so probably 10 days at least, I would think, before, once they're four, before they're done. So if anybody does need, be back on maps.
Up right now.
Up right, yeah. It will be, I guess, when the cars can take it again. We can come back to that. The one thing I do wanna ask, we are getting our final saw grant reports, and I didn't know how council wanted to go through those. Did you wanna have a, just a work session before a meeting? Probably November, I would think, we'll be ready for that. They're interesting, I mean, I think they turned out really, they turned out really well and there's a lot of work into them, but it'll be good to just sit down and go through them. Basically three of them, but I think we can probably get through that in an hour, hour and a half. Any questions, so, to that. Well, we have to submit, well, we don't actually submit them to the state, but we have to tell the state we did them in December.
Go back and answer.
And then, I know the chief mentioned earlier about the Heart ambulance. He references the agreement that we have, which is basically the former chief and the Heart people saying, can we store the Heart ambulance? And we saying yes. So it's not like some formal and stone agreement, but it, you know, seemed okay at the time. Well, now that we're, it looks like the Avalon Project is gonna move forward, we're gonna have a storage space issue that's gonna be fairly imminent, because we store things on the 650 on Dan Hoy, fencing, ice rinks, and any off-season equipment. So I was thinking that we could perhaps give the Heart team some notice, four months' notice and say, hey, you know, we're gonna need you to find a new location to store the ambulance. Potentially Dr. Tom's or Dr. Tom's, I don't, you know, maybe it's a term somewhere, but unless council has any concern about that, I was gonna at least reach out to them and let them know that they need to just start thinking, because we really could use that space. Technically, the fire department only pays for 40% of building, so I would argue they use a substantial percentage more and we just need a little bit of that back, so. And at least with some notice, you know, they're not getting kicked out next week or anything. The disaster and safety project starts next week. I mentioned about the Chambers Ice Festival, which we did do years ago. Probably been about, what, five years, four years since they tried it, but they wanna rejuvenate and restart that. The timeline for Milk Creek Park Base 2 has been updated. Hopefully that's set in stone now. Council will see scopes for construction services at some point from, a little bit from O-HM, because they had to be involved and then, because it's a tap project and then JGR.
Was that lady, was she the one, Samantha one for the stop sign?
No, no, she's your...
Yeah, I thought she said something about school.
No, she was your... Yeah, that's in here as well, the report back from O-HM on the Grand Street stop sign request. So I think we'll move forward with implementing some of the other suggestions in the report. Maybe some new pavement markings that we could add put down when, they do the markings for the crosswalks, weather dependent and, you know, the vegetation and the, potentially council could see a request for the no parking. We could try that temporarily, put some barrels and see if it works. From the DPWs, looking at the situation, that those aren't parents parking there, those are staff parking there, so, you know, we could potentially block those off and see if it helps.
Because that was never engineered. The school put that in, but we didn't have control over that mentally at the time. It's always been a problem, because that school...
It's always been a problem, because it's got school ideas on it, and we've got a street coming through, and it, the parking up there is so tight. Somebody parked in the other day. I was, I couldn't believe it, but they just pull up really fast, jump out, take off, and the school, they get to something. It's dense, and I think the school needs to look at that. Not gonna get better. But, anyway. I see why they think it's crowded, but...
Yeah, I don't know those stop signs are really important.
Ours along the way.
Okay. Anything else?
So, that pro ribbon cutting or con ribbon cutting, or, I don't...
Do you have, do you have time on that?
Well, I mean, I don't think that we spend a lot of time actually celebrating and enjoying good things. I think we get bogged down in negative things all of the time. So, any opportunity I have to have something good is always gonna be pro for me, but...
Okay, I'm in favor.
That's...
I'm in.
I mean, I'm not looking to, like, hold up the opening or anything for doing that.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
Stash, if you want it.
Notice.
Oh, good. You know how quirky you are, right?
There's a pro picture spot for it, right? Anything else to, uh, what? Okay. My written report is in the packet. I will note the D D A meeting this week is expected to be very light. Mostly just did voice approval, so I don't think there's gonna be much happening there. I'm gonna be meeting with the chair of the A C H committee. Law reached out to me to report on their last meeting, and I understand there's a few members that maybe looked in the step aside or stepped down, potentially, and, you know, she wanted to fill me on what's going on. So, I have to set that meeting up, but it'll be after, after hours sometime this week, I hope. In the same vein, I was contacted by a resident, Mrs. Shaw. She was interested in the Avalon project. She's the one that potentially pulled the petitions to try to put something on the ballot. So, I made arrangements, she's not gonna be at the library tomorrow at 7:30. I'm not quite sure what direction or what she wants to ask me, but we're gonna meet and just discuss the Avalon project. I received an email from Karen Dowling, who lives to the northwest of the potential here-on-urban-drive property that we submitted the offer on, that Courtney mentioned. She's the resident that lives there, and, you know, her email was generally not excited about, you know, seeing a major parking lot there. And I just responded that, you know, at this point, the reason we submitted the offer was because our Parks and Recreation Plan identifies a goal of having access to the river. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna turn into a large parking lot. There's absolutely no plan for the property other than access. Now, how we grant that access or how it's, you know, done, has yet to be determined. I even told them that we weren't even sure at this point if we might be the ultimate owner of the property. So, I did communicate back to her, just wanted you to know that, in case you either know her or received a similar email from her. And then, the last thing I wanted to report is, I heard from a school board member today, who asked some questions about the billboard that we had on pedestrian safety. Ron Dar asked if that was ours, or some other group that put that up, and I just told them that we had put it up to prove, you know, the importance of pedestrian safety in the community. He had a comment that suggested he wasn't sure what the message meant, but I told him I thought it was pretty clear. That's wrong. That's wrong, so. But, you know, it's been up, and I actually, is it down now?
Probably should be, if not, we're getting free time. Because it's one of our Avalon...
I can't remember this morning, I have to go back, but... Anyway, just wanted to report out those four communications that I've had with area residents slash members of the community, so. So, anyway, any questions for me on, anything on the report? The training session, M and L training session went well. Party did a great job presenting our process. Like, free advertising for her in front of lots of other communities, so they tend to hire, you know?
You don't even know her.
No, she did a really good job, and it was well received, so.
Manchester's pretty far along. They actually just submitted to the state to do a review of their petition. They're a little farther along than I realized.
Okay, so, no further questions for me. There are no council member reports this evening, so I will move on to consent agenda, reminding whoever that there is, there are two items.
I'm moving through the two items listed on the consent agenda. Bills of cable in an amount of $634,027.61, and to the establishment of power, trick or treat hours on the 30th.
From 5:30 to 7:00.
All right.
This will get it officially in the minutes. Okay, so, motion by Fisher, support by Bell. Ms. Jones, if you would call the vote, please.
Bell?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. We have no, no old business items to discuss. We do have five new business items. First one is the consideration of a repair to our third well, or well number three, for an amount not to exceed 9,000.
I'm going to approve that.
Motion by Smith?
Second.
By, Zach, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. I like it when you guys are fighting over the motion, that's...
Which one got, I actually gave it to Michelle, so it's okay.
Yeah, there's really not much to suffer what's in here. We just are trying to have this off before it becomes, it's a small leap now, enough that it's, or, well, not visible, if you can hear it, whatever that word is. It's auditorially noticeable when you take the casing off or top off the well. So, just want to get that repaired. We have to galvanize, the water just tends to eat through the, you know, the raw water before it's been treated. The plastic's been holding out while, from what we've seen. This is our, this is our last galvanizer.
Okay. Any questions by council? All within budget or planned?
This is not planned, but we have contingency.
Okay. Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Uh, Smith?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. New business item L two is consideration of a multi-year tap agreement, tap fee agreement for 3075 Baker, which for the public is on the west side of Baker, just north of the alley between Forest and Grant.
Okay, area fence off.
The area fence off, yeah.
I'll make the motion that we approve the...
Is there a brand new, kind of half block over there?
It's across from the dentist, or the yellow house, that alley, yeah. Motion by Smith? Second by Bell? To approve the tap fee agreement, okay? Any discussion needed?
Zach to Jim Cameron? So, this isn't consistent with the policy we adopted with resolution?
Correct.
Right, that's why you're, that's why you're seeing it. If not, I would've just signed it, so. But it is a hybrid project, it's a little bit different than anything we've...
Because it's got the residential and commercial, it's just a bit low.
Yeah.
This is the second time in the past couple of months we've looked at something not consistent with policy.
Not since you...
We allowed a difference for the schools.
Yeah.
Is there something else?
That was probably the one I was thinking of.
Turn around.
Is it worth our while to continue to investigate, make a more flexible policy, so we don't have to hold up projects to bring in here?
It actually doesn't hold up that much.
Yeah, because it's finals only.
It's just a matter of, when she makes her payment, and if you would agree to this three-year payment, instead of standing at the, by the resolution, but just one.
Sometimes I think it's kinda hard to anticipate what, you know, we're getting a lot of different things now, and you think you have it covered with the new construction and the commercial that we added.
So, she just wants to break it into three-year payments, is that what you mean?
Which is consistent with what we allow other projects to do, it's just this one doesn't quite fit the bill.
Yeah. Wanted to make sure I was understanding what we're talking about. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote. To approve the multi-decap fee agreement, three-year payments.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Tell them thanks for their investment. New business item L three, consideration of reimbursement resolution for purchase of Dexter Hannah Road property. I'm going for the adoption of this draft resolution, this fellow here.
Second.
Page is that on? Seventy-six and seventy-seven, thank you. Motion by Michelle, second by Knight, thank you both. Mr. Smith?
I'm here on page seventy-five. It says the bond amount listed in the resolution is not to exceed, a not-to-exceed amount of a potential future bond issue. And, in here, it says, on page seventy-six, in one B, it says that the amount is 7 million. At one time, we talked about, it could potentially be as much as 10 million, if we...
Right, that number just needs to be whatever you all are comfortable with. It could be anywhere from seven to 10, you can make it 20, it doesn't matter, it won't bind anything, but can't be... Now, it could be that, the other thing I was thinking was, you know, we talked about two different types of bond language, too, where the fire station was parked, and then the city office was parked. So, yeah, it can be, it can be 10 million, it doesn't...
I guess I'd rather say 10, and then we're covered.
Right. That's fine, because it's, like I said, it's not binding us to reimburse ourselves, it's not binding us to issue a certain amount of bonds. But if we want to, we have to have it done.
If we want to, we have to, we have to have this passed for about 60 days of, of what?
Close.
Of when we close on the property.
When the money drains out, yeah.
And we closed on what date?
It was the end of August. So, this is the last meeting before the deadline expires. I think it was August 26th or something.
Okay, so this just protects the option.
Correct. Yeah, we don't even have to do it at the end, if we don't want to.
Okay. And to clarify, too, the 7 million is our best guess for what it will be now. If it's, ends up more than that, this doesn't, gets to the track, correct?
Well, it needs to be a not-to-exceed amount. That's why Jim was saying, maybe we make it 10, just because, I mean, I didn't have the new figures for the fire station when this was finally drafted, so maybe it should just be 10. I mean, like I said, the 10 doesn't...
Right, doesn't really mean anything. It doesn't mean you're going for 10, but, yeah. If it ends up being 10, then, you know, you're covered. Or if it ends up being eight, or five.
Is this specific to just the fire station?
Yeah. And, well, I think...
The reason I ask that is if we end up bonding for both at the same time...
Yeah, that's...
Are we within the limit of what this says? Or is this just implied for the fire station?
It'd be less than that.
No, it's just for the fire station.
Well, there's about a fifty percent chance we'll keep it under 10.
Yeah, and the sheriff, too.
Weber, don't.
I don't think it hurts to make it higher than any, if it can always be less.
All right, that's what my motion was then. So, the motion on page seventy-six and seventy-seven, with the, the first whereas, shown as 10, just for the protection of the option.
And one B.
And in one B, yes, I was thinking twice, yeah, sorry. Everyone understands, I don't care if you're tonight? Have a good one, if you want. Other discussion about this? Okay, Ms. Jones, if you call the vote.
Bell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. New business item L four, consideration of the proposal for urban wireless solutions for small cell ordinance assistance.
I'll move approval of pass one, if the amount not to exceed $3,000, that being preparing and presenting materials to city council and the other folks with the 5G technology support.
Motion by Michelle, second by Bell, thank you both.
So, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I figure I've already spoken so much, and maybe you don't wanna hear anything more from me. But Mr. Weber, who provided the proposal, is here tonight, in case you have any questions. So, I don't know, I bring him up. And just to reiterate again, we went out for a proposal, or asked a proposal from Mr. Weber, because our attorney, Steve Esty, recommended him for the work that we do. And we contacted Stephen Isher.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Doug Weber, I'm the managing director for Urban Wireless Solutions. First of all, I want to apologize, I don't have a Honolulu blue and silver tie on my wardrobe, so I didn't... And I also wanted to thank you for indulging me. All right. It's my daughter in the back, back of the room, who's here for her civics extra credit, and she's a junior at Plomo High School right now, so I appreciate that. And if you have a packet of materials that Michelle provided to you, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I can provide you a brief description of who Urban Wireless Solutions is, whatever your plan is.
So, let me ask a couple of questions. So, all this is new to me. Okay. Then maybe I should've thrown some of these questions out earlier, but, so, there were some pictures provided, Michelle, thank you for that. Or Doug, thank you. So, what, what part is new? I mean, while I'm looking at these, is it the can at the top?
So...
And then the stuff in the middle? Or in one part?
Well, new is a relative term. All new within, I would say, within the last two to three years.
I mean, do you wish it gets added to the poll? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes. The, the can and town that you see at the top, one of those is near downtown Plomo. One is in Canton Township at the intersection of Hagerty and Warren Road, in front of the Zaki headquarters. Those are 4G small cell installations. Michelle included the picture that I sent her. It's one, it's in Dearborn, that looks like it's three small panel antennas at the top of a utility pole. She has that on. Yes, the one, the one at the bottom, bottom left, that's in Dearborn. On Michigan Avenue, just off of Michigan Avenue, in the west Dearborn Business District. That's a 5G installation. Those types of antennas is what Verizon is using right now. My dealings in this, in this space, in the primary with Verizon, I worked for Verizon for 14 years as a direct employee, and before that, for another 10 years as an outside counsel and site acquisition agent. So, my knowledge is with Verizon. Prior to that, just so you know, I worked for five years as an assistant city attorney for the city of Dearborn. So, I have a little bit of knowledge on both sides of the fence here, that it is beneficial. The picture up at the upper right corner is actually in the inner harbor area of Baltimore. It's a, what they call, stealth installation. You see how the top of the pole is kind of bulged out a little bit? That's where the antennas are. That particular installation was done by Crown Castle, one of the top tower companies, major tower companies in the country. And they're now developing into these small cell spaces. But that is one type installation you'll see maybe in a downtown area that's developed. Many of these others that you see, you know, the other three are all here in Michigan, and what people are doing, or what the carriers are doing, is colocating on utility poles, wooden poles, where they're available. You won't see too many that in a downtown area, unless they have material of the city or anything of that nature. I can speak to, again, I can speak to Verizon. I know Verizon has a master of the grid with D T E Energy. All these are, you know, the poles that they, uh, that is their quickest path to getting some of these installations in place and... That is their quickest path to getting some of these installations in place and up and running. Where it's going to get tricky is when they need more of these in your downtown, downtown Dexter, downtown Plumb, downtown the other, where you have nice streetscapes, nice light poles, that sort of thing. There are all kinds of manufacturers out there that are now designing poles that accommodate this equipment and will make the, not mess up the aesthetics of the downtown areas.
How frequent are they installed, Doug?
Pardon?
How frequent? I mean, I see them on like one...
Spacing?
Yeah, like if we see this one, is this one of twenty in the area or what?
Well, so what you see, there, with the technology of the Verizon, which is called normal meter wave, it's about five hundred feet is about the space, give or take. Where it's, like, yeah, where I started, where I was going to get to is what's going to start to get tricky is that's Verizon. We haven't really seen what AT&amp;T is doing yet, what T-Mobile's doing yet, T-Mobile slash Sprint, however that works out. And there will be a fourth carrier of some nature. So, you're going to have these carriers that want to be in these downtown areas and their networks require the capacity. And this is where municipalities in Michigan still has some latitude to do something. As you know, the FCC adopted a regulation last year that kind of dictates this area. Michigan State Legislature then took it upon itself to adopt a statute, by the way, Michigan is one of twenty-eight states that's adopted such a statute, that lays out specifics of what you can charge for application fees, annual fees for co-location, what you can and can't do. Where you do have still some latitude is in terms of placement, spacing, aesthetics, that sort of thing. And that's where my company's service could come in and kind of help you craft your ordinance so that it works with the Michigan statute and the FCC regulation, which keeps you out of litigation, which I don't think anybody likes. There is a lot of that going on around the country. New York State has a bunch of it right now because they don't have a state statute in place. But...
Can we ask them to share equipment?
Share equipment? Not share equipment, but share space. I mean, that's what some of these pole manufacturers are grappling with right now, is trying to come up with structures that are still aesthetically pleasing where multiple carriers can co-locate or it doesn't look like a Christmas tree or a big chimney or whatever in the middle of your street. They won't share equipment. There may, I should qualify that. There may be some ability to share antennas, but the radio equipment, the little boxes from wherever, whatever side you see, those they won't share. So, there's, there's a lot of tweaks that still need to be done in this process, as we discussed internally in our office. It's kind of like the wild, wild west right now with this. Everyone is scrambling. They're trying to get their heads around what's the best process. And that's, and it's both sides, the wireless carriers, local governments are trying to get their heads around this. And it's kind of like the early days of wireless again, when towers were going up all over the place. People weren't sure how to deal with that. And now this is a whole new world and people are trying to figure out the best way to deal with this. The purpose for my company is to try and bridge the gap a little bit, as my slogan says. Hopefully, we can get the local governments talking productively with the wireless carriers and vice versa, because it's, you probably know that over the years, it's been kind of a well-made relationship between the wireless carriers and local government. Any other questions you have or anything?
So, how long was the first step of this taken?
Uh, I can work with, cooperate with the timeline. We can probably do it by the end of the year if we needed to. And, you know, depending on my calendars and all that sort of thing. Now, we have, believe it or not, we have the holidays coming up already and all that sort of thing, so...
Questions by council? Thank you for introducing yourself.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Michelle, second by Bell. I don't think there were any changes, right? Did you get in there that's for not to see, or not to, for the not see, well, for a fee of three thousand? So, for the motion.
For task one on page eighty-one.
Right. Okay, Mr. Jones, please call the vote.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Peasants? Excuse me, peasants, yeah. Bell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business item, thank you for coming to the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
You might need to report your working with them.
Uh, new business item L five is a discussion item for the Grand Street reconstruction project.
Yeah, so...
A future ribbon-cutting opportunity.
Yeah, they have been bad for a long time, so maybe it is worth it. So, yeah, our next project for next summer is Grand Street, something I think a lot of people are looking forward to because, especially the DPW. Yeah, so, uh, we'd like to get the letters out, the project area. We've met, Dan's met, Kurt's met several times. We've gone through this quite a bit with OJ. I'm trying to figure out the best concept. Patrick's here, Marcus is here. I don't know if you guys know Marcus. He's helped us with various projects, but mostly behind the scenes. He actually works out of the Dexter office now, so he's kind of around to help more now. And then Dan, of course, obviously can answer any questions as well, because he's going to do this quite a bit, but, um, the concept is to widen it slightly, have a monovalle curve. We were talking about the parking issue. Sometimes there is parking on Grand. It's mostly on the Matt Kowalski side of the street. What is that, the north side of the street? I think on Morris people, one direction. So, it's kind of similar to how the roads are in West Ridge, where, a Dexter crossing, where it's kind of one side, but the road isn't striped. We have striped Grand in the past, though, so that would be a bit of a change. And it does get more bus traffic. So, that's kind of something that we're tossing around, but that was the concept, is to widen it to twenty-seven feet with the curve. We did have a resident request that we look into green stormwater options, but there's some issues and we do address that in the resident letter that, um, or maybe it's not OJ, I don't know, one of the two, where, you know, we did look at that, but with some of the slope of that road, it makes it challenging to implement.
And this fixes the sanitary problem?
Right, yeah. So, we know that there's a valley in the sanitary line.
A few.
A few, well, yes, multiple, yes, multiple. So, yes, it's a little bit more than what we were planning on, but I think that we should be able to do that. And it's, it would be a big deal to get that taken care of, you know, we have no problem. It is good to see that done and doesn't make any difference in this area and not take care of it.
Knight, something else?
Yeah.
They're also proposing to be get it out of the road.
Yeah, moving it into the green belt.
Yeah, put it in the green belt, which is obviously what we've been doing for the last twenty years with the water, so that's a really big deal.
We're looking at October thirtieth for the resident meeting in the evening at Wiley, so that we can start the meeting on October thirtieth. They're in two weeks from Wednesday, so that we can start the meeting at Wiley and then walk out onto Grand Street. Since we're close by, if people have individual slight issues that they want to talk about, that worked fairly well on Forest.
It's at six?
I think it's going to be probably at six, you know, six o'clock. To make sure the schools, I was thinking I need to make sure I send that to the schools, too. I think it's going to be at Wiley.
Wiley?
Yeah. That's where I'm trying to get it. That's where I originally, we were thought we could do it a few months ago, but we weren't quite ready. They had a, we used media. But it's ought to be convenient though, rather than...
So, we're not going quite as far as the intersection, are we? Where the little study that they just did was?
So, that would, yeah, we'd come a little bit short of that. There's the, uh, the change in payment. One of the recommendations in the study was actually, if you go out there right now, there's kind of a taper. It would be to actually, you couldn't pull that in. Certainly didn't have to do that, but obviously...
That's what I was wondering. You've got that?
They kind of happened after.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, we'll incorporate one into the other.
Yeah. I guess one thing to kind of point out, just to kind of talk about the project a little bit, Marcus will probably give a little more detail on it. So, some of the nuance of this particular street is the road itself, where it's at right now, is very close to the sidewalk. Typically, when we reconstruct a road, if you go down to Central Street right now, it has what we call a half-force curve, which is basically a six-inch-high curve. Because we're so close to the sidewalk, we had to be careful about driveway grades. So, we actually pulled a different detail in for that.
Yeah, so we'll be using a monovalle curve detail, which will have two and a half to three-inch high rather than a six-inch. So, like that, Patrick mentioned, a six-inch curve over three feet of driveway grade, the driveway approach rate is approaching seventeen percent, which is way too much. So, with the monovalle curve, we get it down in the seven percent range, whatever length. But I do want to point out, we'll see sometimes with monovalle curve, there's not actual drops for driveways. That's not what we're focusing here. So, we'll have the monovalle curve, but we still will have the drop across the drive, so you're not, you know, going to bump into the driveway, so... It allows us to do two things really. We, it helps with the drives and it also slightly reduces how much cop we have to do. Essentially, put the new road back at the elevation of the existing. So, when you put curve, then you kind of drop everything by a few inches, so producing a couple of inches for work with that curve as well, hopefully possible.
I think maybe the only other thing to note, this is kind of a little bit of a behind-scenes thing, but as Marcus, Dan, and Kurt have met, one of the things we're really trying to nail on this project is we are proposing some storm sewer up the road. We're going to do probably a little more on the front end than we've done in the past, where we basically go out and identify where all the sewer leads are at and get those located in the deal, so we can avoid any conflicts through that. We did that back in two thousand thirteen on the forestry project, where we put the new storm sewer in, on the Coback side. Worked pretty well, so we'll use that here just to avoid any sort of conflicts. And one, one last thing on this, with the sewer work, this is really kind of a culmination of all the asset management work coming together here. We have identified through the work at the Saw Grand and then just prior knowledge based on what Dan's experienced with maintenance, we've identified assets that need replacement with the sanitary along Grand Street. We've also identified a culvert that has some, some issues with it, so there's a lining item on the estimate, you'll see. So, this is really, the approach here is that we reconstruct this road and then we really shouldn't have to be back for twenty years until we rehabilitate the, the old overlay. And that's really what asset management's all about, really, finding out what those needs are and when you're going to reconstruct, do it all, so you don't have to come back. The watering system was replaced in two thousand and ten, just as a background there. So, you have, you know, pretty, pretty new utilities here, which is not uncommon for a lot of the city, when you look back at some of our main streets, it's just kind of needs here that come together here.
And that includes franchise utilities as well, so we've notified DE and others, what don't know what the project's covering, if they have any needs in the area, they need to get in there, get that taken care of, so that we can help them.
And we're also going to use this as another opportunity. Well, with this, with the resident letter, we're also going to send a project contact information sheet that we're going to ask all the residents to return, so that we can have a project contact list, because we haven't really, we haven't done that in the past, but I think it would be helpful, I mean, just for things like a Central Street project, when a car all of a sudden needs to be moved, or, you know, you just need to contact an individual homeowner, sometimes they're not home, or it's just hard to track them down. And so, this way, if we can get most everyone to return the forms, then we're going to have really good project contact info. And the other thing we're going to do is review their water service lines as part of the DEQ's push towards eliminating lead service lines, or not lead, but galvanized service lines. We're going to find out if we have any there and then figure out if, you know, we need to replace them, or at least contact the homeowner to do the inventory, because eventually we'll be required to replace, I think it's like five percent of them probably a year to the homeowner, pass the curb stop box to the house. And so, we're going to use this, since we'll be contacting the residents anyway, as a kind of a pilot project on how that's going to work moving forward, too, so...
I think we suspect there's probably four or five on the street.
Better galvanizers.
From two thousand and ten.
So, a couple of thoughts I have. One, maybe we can make sure that the schools, they are aware of this?
Yeah, no, I...
Did we conclude whether or not there's going to be a striped house bill or not? I know the picture shows the old line.
Well, it depends. I mean, the parking is the issue, so I don't know if we wait for the resident feedback. I mean, I could change the wording of the letter slightly to say that's one thing we want feedback on, because if we stripe it, it can't be parking. So, if we want it to be a little bit more flexible for parking, you know, but it is a higher-traffic road than a subdivision road. So...
It's not typically a major, so that's kind of been the decision, won't we stripe?
Right. But there must have been some reason why they started striping it.
I think we, we'll look at the site distance, if you have anything I can, like, figure.
Yeah, coming up over the hill.
Yeah, that might be the only thing, we'll look at that, get that down a little bit.
Would you like to comment on something, Mr. Jones?
Yes, I would. Are we, are we concerned with the resident parking or are we supplying parking for the school?
Well, you can't choose one or the other, but I mean, most of the time, we get in trouble with residents when we eliminate their parking.
No, I understand that.
I'm good with, I'm good with the concept of signing it so there's parking only on one side. I just was, I just saw the real line and just want to clarify that.
It's still a bit of a debate.
Okay. At the intersection of Grand and Hudson, can we set it up so that the sidewalk ramps are in that intersection to go north? We have that one side of sidewalk on the east side of the resident building, the new house on Forest. Eventually, we'll want to connect that. Can we make sure that that intersection is prepped to go along the east side of Hudson? Should we ever decide to do it? Does that make sense, Patrick? You know what I'm asking?
Yeah.
The Grand and Hudson?
Yeah, the Grand and Hudson, right here, so we can go this way, because we come down to, towards the alley.
But we're not doing sidewalk on that side of the street?
Well, we have a resident that put it over there, so I was, if we prep this intersection... Paul actually made that point at one point in time when we were talking about the project, that we, we need to make it look like we're preparing for the future, so just, you know...
On that though.
So, the sidewalk can, so you can walk around the intersection on sidewalk and then you can actually take off and run. It looks like you're getting rid of the, you're closing the storm sewer there, so... Just an idea.
Off the top of your head, what's the radius for Inverness and Grand, the intersection there on the curve? It looks smaller than Central.
On the northeast corner there?
On both of them.
It's probably a fifteen.
Okay, I really like that radius. It slows you down cognitively. I'm going to ask this question, since we're in the area. What would it take to put sidewalk on the other side of the street, since we're in the area?
So, we looked at, as we were going through the conceptual stages here, a couple of different alternatives, and one of them was that sidewalk on the north side. So, you'll notice, if you look at the aerial, you can add it, you can add the packet there. This is a, you know, the right away there is ninety-nine feet, so what is legally right away definitely functions as a front yard. It feels like a front yard. So, there's a lot of landscaping, there's some great challenges, so several driveways have retaining walls. So, we looked at basically a three-foot offset to mimic the south side on the north side, and that impacted, if it was three of the retaining walls, and it would be six street rules?
Yeah, probably something like that.
There are six large tree rules that would be required. Might have those. We had those cross-sections that we worked with staff, I can certainly... I have those, we had those cross-sections that we worked with staff, we can certainly get that to you and prepare it to evaluate what those impacts would be.
We just thought it would be a little impactful, quite impactful to the residents on the north side, and also the project cost was only supposed to be around $600,000, and we're now off that, shockingly. So we're trying to be a little bit mindful of, since it is on one side of the street.
Well, that's okay, if there's a way we can answer that question, so at least adjust the tax, just-
Yeah, we look at it, we can provide that information.
What would answer the question, Zach?
Well, just kind of a ballpark of, it sounds like you've already done a lot of the fieldwork, is it going to cost us $50,000 or $200,000 to do it? Again, it will be impactful.
Just cost, but not impact?
Well-
Is what you, I just want to make sure we get you what you need.
There is a bit of pain, but if you only have to rip off one bandaid instead of one now and another in 10 to 15 years, it could be a little less painful. So that-
They're going to have to assess the impact that you cost, so it's really won't-
Yeah, we have that.
Is that something, might mean the driveways are a little longer on that side, or the, you know, the grating's a little more than anybody more they put it. Is that something we share out and potentially discuss a public meeting, or just kind of thought on that?
Yeah.
Do you think you can have it by the next meeting?
But that's after-
Yeah, we have it already, we, we had done that.
Well, but I mean, I guess I don't know what to put in the letter now to the residents. Do I tell them that's under consideration, because they will want to know that.
Yes, they will.
The people on the north side will need to know that. So I mean, I guess we could show a sketch with it like dotted in or something, as a conversation, which will probably make the meeting more interesting.
I suppose you could caveat and say that it's, you know-
It's still being reviewed for cost.
Budget, maybe budget driven too, but then at least to show what that impact looks like. Like you're saying, Zach, we're in there once, this is a good opportunity to gather all those comments and find out what we can say.
Maybe people would really want it, they don't care.
Right.
Matt, that would be interesting.
It's just like a lot of people on Forest-
Right in front of Matt, though.
A lot of people on Forest, you know, saw the illustrations with sidewalks on both sides.
Right.
And they, they didn't necessarily read everything, they just looked at the illustration and said, oh, they're going sidewalks on both.
But it also preps them for the idea that potentially there could be.
Yeah, but it wasn't clear that they were, you know, just by looking at the illustration that, okay, right now we're just doing the lawn.
If it's not too painful, it would be a good discussion to have as part of that meeting. They may all say, yes, we absolutely want a sidewalk, and then we, we figure out, you know, they've gotten the idea of the impacts, and should at least get us close in, you know, printing close to cost by then.
I think probably the thing people are obviously most concerned about is trees and landscaping, and we've already kind of-
It would already says that.
Has to go, if that happens.
So yeah, I guess if we can just like add it as a, like a dotted line or potential, whatever, and then we could still get a stop out this week, because otherwise we can push the meeting to the 6, if we have.
You can have it. Thank you for your work on it. Other council questions? Maybe the staff as well? We're planning ahead. Okay, seeing none, there's no action needed, that's a discussion item. Council comments this evening, starting with Andrew. How are you?
Good.
Good. How's the football team?
We played a little bit of a slump.
Got you. Mr. Bell?
I just want to mention I'll be out of town the end of this week, so I'll miss the wastewater treatment final cost, sorry.
You can arrange a special to your-
Okay.
Right, yeah. If you bring them, we'll leave it.
Ball called, they're going to fall.
Right.
He's not going to make it either.
There you go.
Good. Ms. Fisher?
No, I'm okay.
Ms. Jones?
I would just like to report on something that we're doing at the museum, what we've been doing, in the past, we've always done the second graders out of Gordon Hall and come to the museum. Last year we started with an archaeology dig and went out at Gordon Hall, and that's bringing in the college. We did something the past week with seventh graders, a couple of classes of them coming to the museum to look at our artifacts and what, and then go back to a creative writing class to write a story, maybe not completely factual, but based on an item or something, they've seen a building or something from, you know, from the past, and that's here. And it was quite interesting, it's a wonder, you know, the second graders are great to talk to, but, you know, you talk a little bit more one-on-one with seventh graders, and it was, and they were very nice to have you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Smith?
I'm not great, thank you.
Ms. Michelles?
Just if you haven't seen Central Street, oh, look there, it is looking really sharp.
The lights are on, did I understand me, the lights are on?
Yeah, on today. Well, they're on half the talk today.
Yeah, it didn't look like all of them.
You guarantee the other side will come on.
Are you sure you want to make that?
I, yeah.
They're on a little more dull sensor or something?
I think they're on two different circuits.
Got you. Okay, we are back around in non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak this evening?
Two questions.
Yes.
You spoke earlier-
Could you stand up and introduce yourself, please, at the corner of the podium?
Hello, I'm Bill Edwards, I live on Third Street.
Thank you, Bill.
Been here five years. You spoke earlier about property on north of Huron River Drive, and a woman concerned about a parking lot, I believe?
Correct.
So my question is, you said there were no plans to build a parking lot, which isn't the same as saying there's no guarantee to not build a parking lot.
Correct.
So is the decision to leave it flexible for use in the future?
The only decision that's been made is that we offered the appraised price for the property in hopes of having 90 days to further study whether or not it was a good idea.
Okay.
That's the only decision that's been made.
Okay.
There's obviously been discussion, when you have that conversation, there's discussion about how would you use it, what could be there, should we leave it natural, do we want to provide access, what do you do with the old barn or the barn that's there, the building?
But you're not tying your hands on that.
We haven't tied our hands to anything other than, we've put in some effort to get an appraisal-
Okay.
-in cooperation with the Huron River Waterage Council, and then the offer has been extended, and we have not heard back from them. But it was the, I was just reporting that the neighbor next door to the northwest was concerned about that.
The only other question was, Michelle, you spoke about, the gentleman here talking about the wireless network? I haven't been to all the other meetings, is he, did he come through a decision process of evaluating multiple companies, or how did that happen?
May I?
Please.
When we contacted the city attorney for assistance in dealing with the 5G small cell technology issue, the city attorney made the recommendation that we contact this gentleman.
So no, we did, we did, we did, yeah, we did not bid this, we considered it specialized area, so.
Okay.
Good question though. Thank you for your comments this evening, and your attendance. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak this evening? If not, I will seek a motion for adjournment. And go ahead. Lead by Smith, second by Bell, all in favor. Hi, have a great evening.